Good morning. It's Wednesday, May 6, 2015. We're here for Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting, and as tradition, we will start off with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we don't have anybody signed up for public comment, and Commissioner Carlson is up in Portland working on some really good things for the county and public safety. And Commissioner, I would like to ask permission to use a visual aid to start off our meeting today before we get into the consent calendar, if you don't object.
As long as it doesn't hurt me, I'm fine.
So Commissioner Brentano and I always have a little, I get to be the chair today, which is really cool, right? And we have a little bit of competition on who's really the big stuff around here, but this cartoon kind of reminds me of Commissioner Brentano's and my struggle together. It's a picture of a pig and a cow, and they're looking up at a sign that says, "Try our classic bacon burger combo," and the cow says, "Why do you always get top billing?" So just wanted to let you know that you have top billing.
Thank you. So who did you think I was in that cartoon, by the way?
Well, I asked him if he would prefer bacon or burger, and he said both, so I think you're a combination of both of those.
Well, yes, that would be true. All right.
Great. Why don't we go into the consent calendar? Nice to have fun when somebody's away, we play.
I don't know if I can get serious now, but Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. On that, we have under the Assessor, approve a resolution approving the amended Marion County Assessment and Taxation Grant Application, reducing the expenditure amount from $6,664,729 to $6,322,401. Board of Commissioners approve an order upholding the Personnel Officer's classification review determination of the Department Specialist III Sheriff's Office, Prole and Probation Division. Public Works receive Planning Commission's decision approving subdivision variance case SUBVAR number 15001, Shamburger Family Trust. Receive a hearings officer decision approving conditional use case CU15006, Sonnen, Clerk's File 5694. Under the treasure, continuation of some small cash accounts, we consider approval regarding petty cash and change funds accounts for the following departments. Establish a $500 petty cash account for the Administrative Division of the District Attorney's Office. Reclassify a change fund account to a petty cash account in the District Attorney's Office. Establish a $100 petty cash account for Dog Services Division of Community Service. Establish a $300 change fund account for the Dog Services Division of Community Service. And reduce the petty cash account at parole and probation from 200 to 100.
And I'll second your motion to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. So next item on our agenda under action is to consider approval of a resolution supporting the reopening of Willamette Falls locks, and Commissioner, you are on that list.
My name's on it. I'm certainly supportive of it. Was looking here when it was closed, but the locks are right before Willamette Falls and allow passage of goods and tourism, recreational activities. Anyway, Corps of Engineers closed it, and this is an effort to get it open. I feel a need to tell this story. I guess I'm tied to it a little bit. I'll make it real, real quick. So it's 1915, and my grandfather's 12, and he has appendicitis at St. Paul. They flagged down a ferry boat up through these very same locks to a hospital that I think was Emmanuel, and he recovers. This is before antibiotics, and it was a total burst in peritonitis. He was a year, pretty miserable. But I always think I'm pretty linked to those, because if that doesn't happen, obviously, I'm not here. Might have been happier for everybody. But I've always had a connection to these, and I think for both commerce, tourism, recreation, we'd like to see those reopened. I think it'd be the benefit of Marion County. So that's really all I can say about it. So if I could, I would make a motion that we do approve a resolution that supports reopening of Willamette Falls locks.
And I'll second your motion. Further discussion? I'll just say that the other issue is, right now, we're okay with getting our ferries taken care of, but if there was ever a reason why we needed to get ferries down through there, there's actually three ferries. There's one in Canby, and other vessels, the entertainment vessels that we have, what do you want to call that, the sternwheel here in Salem. So those locks are important and support this resolution, and I think Tammy and your children and your grandchildren were thankful that those locks were there and that you're here.
Kids, probably. Tammy's another issue, but fine.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass, action passes, passes. We have another one with your name on it. Consider approval of resolution supporting the creation of Willamette Falls National Heritage Area.
Well, again, Chair Cameron, I'll take this. We had a presentation about two weeks ago. This is more of an idea to kind of establish an area. It certainly is an historical area for settlements in Oregon, Oregon City, St. Paul, French Prairie, and it takes those areas from Oregon City to Mission Bottom, almost to Salem, and gives them a special designation, a congressional designation. Has no effect in terms of limitations on what people can do with the problem, with their property, but we'll highlight the area, make it available for grants that I assume would help with tourism, and I guess highlight one of the real historical centers in Oregon. So, oh, and we also made sure, and I have already said it wouldn't affect use of property, but we don't want anything that would stop Marion County's ability to cross-dredge and keep our ferry open at Wheatland Ferry, and we made notice of that, and I don't think it comes into play anyway. So that's about what I can say about it. It's a good idea in highlighting this area and has no impacts dollar-wise or use-wise with this area for the individuals. So I'd make a motion that we approve the resolution that supports creation of Willamette Falls National Heritage Area.
And I'll second your motion. Any further discussion? I would just echo what you just said. I think it's just a historical heritage area, and that with that, potentially, they can apply for some tourism grants and some other things to help with recreation and tourism in the area. So all those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, up next, Tamara and Bruce from Community Services. Consider a reexamination of decision by the Marion County Hearings Officer in case number 154238 and case number 15-4239. Remand back to the hearings officer or schedule a public hearing before the Marion County Board of Commissioners. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brentano. I'm Tamara Getch, Director of Community Services, and we're here this morning to bring back to you a topic that was discussed at March 24 with the Board of Commissioners as an opportunity for the Board to reexamine per request received from Mrs. Martin regarding her dog Cooper, who on March 10 was required to relocate her dog for killing a chicken within the neighborhood. And I've brought here today legal counsel so that you can understand the full issue before you, and we are here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. Bruce Armstrong for the record, Assistant Legal Counsel. This is a fairly unusual situation where we have an individual who requests reexamination of a decision, but it is provided for by statute. So as Tamara noted, there was a decision on March 10 where the hearings officer ordered that a dog be relocated, and it involved a livestock situation. Under Oregon statute and the process we follow, chickens are livestock. Ms. Martin's dog did kill a chicken, and in Marion County, we do our own, we've developed our own ordinance to deal with running at large, trespass, and things like that. But when it comes to livestock issues, we follow Oregon statute specifically. So when the determination was made that this dog had killed livestock, there was a limited array of choices that the hearings officer could consider. It was either euthanasia or relocation. And in the decision, the hearings officer did order relocation. Oregon statute and our code does allow a dog owner in these situations to ask the Board to reexamine a decision, and as Tamara noted, the Board did accept that you would reexamine this decision. So the statute provides for this process where a dog owner can request reexamination, but there's nothing more spelled out for how that, the Board carries out that process. As I recall, there was at least one other case where the Board remanded a decision back to a hearings officer in a situation like this where a livestock decision was involved. And in this case, after the Board accepted review, we went back and looked at things, and we learned that neither the dog control officer or the hearings officer were aware that this incident happened in the city of Gates, within a city, not in the outlying unincorporated areas. And we also learned that in at least, so that wasn't brought to the hearings officer's attention, that this was a city situation. And we also learned that in at least one prior case, the hearings officer, in similar circumstances, where a dog had killed a chicken within a city, had gone outside of that, the grid or the guidelines that the statutes lay out, basically applied that knowledge of this occurring in an urban area to the remedial measures that the owner had to take. So we come here today to you. Nothing is laid out. One option is for the Board to set a hearing, for the Board itself to hear this case, or to do a, conduct a hearing as a part of the reexamination. And the other option is to remand the case back to the hearings officer to consider this new information, and for the hearings officer to focus solely on the issue of this one dog and this remedial measure. The case involved trespassing, running, involved another dog running at large, but the sole focus of this request for a reexamination had to do with the livestock decision. And as Ms. Martin articulated in her request, it was simply focused on this issue of the requirement that the dog be relocated. So we've identified as the two options for the Board are to set a hearing or to remand, and our recommendation is that, given that there's this new information, that the case be remanded to the hearings officer, so that, given the facts, the facts at hand, that that can be applied to her decision. So you have two orders before you, and we're making a recommendation that you approve an order remanding the hearings officer's decision, this decision, back to the hearings officer to solely focus on the appropriate remedial measure that should be taken, and again, focused on whether this dog should be euthanized, relocated, or some other alternative. So we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions?
Well, I almost hate to ask, but I want to know. So what would be the likely outcome of sending this to the hearings officer? Can you speculate on that?
I can't. I can't. All facts are different, but we know that when I made reference to the fact that there was at least one prior case where the hearings officer knew that the situation was in a city, and in that case, the hearings officer did not order relocation of the dog, because the statutes provide that if in certain circumstances either the owner has to relocate the dog or the dog has to be euthanized, and that's all the statutes give as an option. But the relocation requirement is that the dog be relocated to an area where it's not likely to have an interaction with livestock. And in the prior case, the hearings officer found that that doesn't, that allowing the dog to remain in a city is consistent with that, because the dog is not likely to have an interaction with livestock. It's in an urban area. So in that prior case, the hearings officer found it was appropriate with appropriate fencing and protections put in place. In that case, the hearings officer allowed, did not order relocation. So I'm sorry, I can't answer your question.
I appreciate that. It sounds like there's some hope of a different outcome, anyway. A little curious, so there's no Gates ordinance or anything that controls or has an influence here?
They allow chickens, but there's nothing that addresses the, they don't have a dog control program, so our dog control program applies. And there is work, as I understand it, later this month, the Board is, does have a work session scheduled to address the backyard chickens, and I think a part of that discussion may relate to the dog livestock interactions. And I think we'll be getting into that in a broader context down the road.
It's hardly wait. The last was, so even if there is a decision rendered and not what this person wants, it still then could come back, and they could do the same and ask for a hearing before this Board?
Absolutely.
There's a lot of opportunities to save Cooper, let's be serious.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Just in most cities, it's not appropriate to have livestock in the city limits, correct?
Correct. There are now, given the new, given the times, there have been ordinances allowing chickens, and by definition, chickens are livestock under the Oregon law.
Even when, even when they're allowed to be within a city?
That we haven't, there's, the statutes do not address that issue, but in a straightforward reading of the statutes, yes. But there, some analysis is being done on that issue.
Sounds like a legislative fix.
Yes. What we're finding is that each city is addressing it independently, and so that will, you'll hear that come forward at the March, I believe it's March 19 work session, or excuse me, May 19 work session later this month.
Okay, so we have a chance to allow this Labrador Cooper to have another day, right?
Right. And so our recommendation again is that the Board approve an order remanding the decision back to the hearings officer.
Chair Cameron, if I could, then I would make a motion that we remand case 15, well, there's two, 4239, 38, back to the hearings officer.
Okay. And I'm on it. Before I second this motion, I wanted to just check legal counsel. I have a Labrador named Cooper. Do I have a conflict of interest here?
Probably.
Okay.
Declared.
Okay, potential. I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our list is Public Works, consider approval of a grant agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for $734,910 for improvements to the Wheatland and Buena Vista ferries and their related systems. And it looks like we have Alan Haley here today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Alan Haley, Director of Public Works. This, before you is an IGA with ODOT, Oregon Department of Transportation, to approve the spending of the ferryboat funds. These funds were actually part of the MAP-21 program from the feds, from the federal government, the Ferry Discretionary Fund. In years past, it used to be a grant program that we would apply for, but under MAP-21, which was the Moving Ahead for Progress in the 21st Century program that the feds put in, it was simply became an allocation to ferry programs around the country. And this allocation has been over a two-year period to the total of the $734,910, which requires a 20% match from the county. So our total project cost would end up being actually $918,638. To spend these funds, we need to move through ODOT, so that's what this agreement accomplishes. And it puts us into a three-phase approach. The first phase to be, includes some signage that we currently have that are all manual, and we're trying to make them automatic signs for open and closed. There's quite a few of them, so whenever we're the high weather or high water, or even low water, or power outages, we have to send somebody out and turn all these signs. So we're putting them into automatic signs that we can do basically from our desk. Some other projects we're looking at for this first phase will be a all-out dry dock system. It's rather large tubes that the boats can roll out onto. We have to do this every five years for both boats. It's, we've been using D8 cats and some other sources to actually get the boats out of the water for Coast Guard inspections. So this is really a good system for us. And this first section of projects has to be completed by December 31, 2015. Phase two would be completed by December 31 of 2016, and phase three by December 31 of 2017. Each phase would have to have a new notice to proceed from ODOT under this agreement, but this agreement approves basically the expenditure of the full $918,638. And a lot of that, in fact, most of that 20% can be a soft match, which is part of our design folks to be able to design the improvements that we're requesting. So I'm open for questions?
I don't really think there are any. Obviously, you want to go ahead and do this, take care of these items, and with ODOT paying most of them, there's nothing to be opposed to. So Chair Cameron, with that, I would make a motion that we approve the grant agreement with Department of Transportation for $734,910 for improvements to Wheatland, Buena Vista ferries and their related systems.
I'll second your motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Alan.
Hey, before you go, Alan, I do have a question. So I erroneously said that we needed to haul, to take our ferries up to Portland for the Coast Guard inspections, and obviously, that isn't true. But there could still be, and Commissioner Cameron kind of related to it, there still could be a time where we have to get up there without the locks that we mentioned earlier in the meeting. Can that be done, or what would happen?
It very definitely could be needed. We brought both boats down through the locks with special permission from the Corps of Engineers. The Wheatland is now, the new one, the new boat is, I think, 12 years old. The Buena Vista will be five years this coming year, which is rather amazing. But both boats came down through the locks, but they weren't put back together. We had to put them totally back together once we got them down here. But if any major improvements were needed, we would need to take them back up to the boat builders, potentially, to have them fix it.
But some of this dry dock that we just approved would, for minor, more minor things, but I only want to know, there's a situation where we could have to get them up to Portland, and those locks would come into play?
That situation could definitely occur.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so we have, we already passed the motion, so we're good. All right. So we're going to move on to the next item under Public Works. Consider approval of a resolution initiating consideration of amendments to concur in the city of Mill City, comprehensive plan amendments. And Brandon is here with us.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. The city of Mill City has prepared an update to their comprehensive plan, and the city council has held its first reading on their ordinance and has submitted the amendment package to Marion County and Lynn County both, because the city is in both counties. The city will finalize its ordinance and hold the second reading once the counties hold their public hearings on the amendments and consider them. The amendments primarily update the city's land use and economic and natural resources elements of their comprehensive plan. The city, as part of the update, did not identify a need for any additional land for residential, public, or employment needs at this time. The amendments also include two areas that the city previously added to the city in 2005 without notifying and working with the county on this action. The Runyon property on the eastern city limits because of a failed septic system, and the city's North Water Reservoir site in the middle north of the city, adjacent to city limits, in order to provide, in order that the city's water system be inside the city limits. Before you today is a resolution initiating the county process to consider these amendments and sets a date for a public hearing for Wednesday, June 24, 2015. Staff recommends that the resolution be approved as provided. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I really don't have any. We had a work session or management update, who knows, Monday, and it's pretty well determined that this is a cleanup item. This is the way things are thought to be in the city, and this would make it follow a process and then therefore correct mistakes. So, go ahead if you have something.
No, I was just going to make a comment. Thank you for getting us up to speed on this earlier. You know, the fact that all the work we're doing up in the canyon, it's great to get some of these loose ends tied up for future grants and things that may come the way of these cities that so dearly need the infrastructure. So thanks, Brandon, on your work on this, and we'll entertain a motion, Mr. Chair, or I mean, I'm not going to make a motion, but.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's all about me.
Uh-huh.
Top billing.
So Chair Cameron, now that we've established who's who, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recommendation and the resolution that initiates the process that considers concurring in the city of Mill City's comprehensive plan amendments and schedule a public hearing for June 24, 2015.
Great, and I'll second the motion. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
Something in my eye. See if I can keep one eye open to read the next on our list of action items is consider approval of an ordinance amending the Marion County Public Contracting Rules in Marion County Code, Chapter 3.25, by emergency procedure. And Canberra and Jeff.
I'm on the right.
Oh, Bruce, back up.
We're switching. But just going to stay close.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Canberra Schlugg. I am the Contracts and Procurement Manager for Finance.
And I'm Bruce Armstrong, Assistant Legal Counsel for Marion County.
And we are here today to present to you our revised public contracting rules. Marion County Public Contracting Rules are adopted by the local contract review board pursuant to the authority set forth in ORS 279A, 279, 279B, and 279C to govern county procedures with respect to purchasing, contracting, and the competitive process. The 2014 Oregon Legislature adopted legislative changes affecting public contracting code. The public contracting code changes that occurred during the 2014 legislative session became effective on July 1, 2014. Marion County has revised its public contracting rules to meet the new statutory requirements outlined in the recent legislative changes. Along with statutory requirements, Marion County's Finance and Legal Counsel reviewed the rules correcting the grammatical errors, clarifications regarding definitions, and policy recommendations around rule practices by the county. So you have, I gave you the, a copy of the rules that we're revising. So pages nine through 21, under Section 10-0110, we made clarifications to the definitions. On page 21, Section 10-0170, we added the following provisions to the delegation of authority. The chief administrative officer will authorize sole source procurements and special procurements that are not source procurements and special procurements that are not more than one hundred thousand dollars. Bid award notices to lowest responsible bidders, formal proposal award notices to the highest ranking proposers, and rejections of all bids and rejections of all proposals when it is in the county's best interest. The county's finance department has delegated the responsibility to establish procedures and guidelines for the contracting and procurement process. On page twenty-one, Section ten dash zero two hundred, minorities, women, and emerging small businesses, the county may limit competition on public contracts for goods and services, or on other public contracts with an estimated cost of fifty thousand dollars or less to carry out affirmative action policies. On page twenty-two, under Section ten dash zero three twenty, preference for recycled materials, we changed our language to say the county shall give preference to the procurement of goods manufactured from recycled materials. On page twenty-six, Section ten dash zero five five six, procurement files, we have added the following provisions. The county's finance department is responsible for maintaining all formal solicitation files and all contracts, intergovernmental agreements, and grants executed by the county. The county departments are responsible for maintaining all intermediate solicitation files and all contract administration files. On page thirty-four, Section twenty dash zero two hundred, we have added a section called Purchasing Considerations, and we have deleted a section called The By Decision. Under, on page forty-six, under Section twenty dash zero two seven zero, intermediate procurement, we have changed the intermediate procurement amount to twenty percent to match the small and formal procurement amendment limitations. On page forty-seven, Section twenty dash zero two seven five, sole source, we have added that the board approval on sole source procurements greater than one hundred thousand dollars. On page forty-seven, Section twenty dash zero two eight five, procurement, special procurement, we have added the county's contract officer or designee shall verify that the goods or services or class of goods or services justification are subject to the requirements of ORS two seventy-nine B point zero eight five. On page forty-nine, Section twenty dash zero three hundred, public notice of solicitation document, we have added that for minority women and emerging small businesses, if the estimated contract price exceeds twenty thousand dollars, then it will be provided, they will be provided timely notice through ORPEN or by providing electronic notice directly to the Advocate's Office. On page fifty, Section twenty dash zero three three zero, we added language from OAR one thirty-seven dash zero forty-seven on electronic offer processes. On page fifty-three, under Section twenty dash zero four five zero, receipt opening and recording of offers, we added that all, all formal solicitations will be received by the department. On page sixty-six, Section thirty dash zero one one zero, we have added a county definition for A and E services. On page eighty-four, Section forty, general provisions related to public contracts for construction services, we have added language required by ORS two seventy-nine C regarding alternative contracting methods, um including but not limited to um design, build, energy savings performance, and construction manager, general contractor method. On page ninety-one, Section forty dash zero two one zero, notice and advertising requirements. This is a duplicate of what was before in Section twenty regarding minority women and emerging small businesses, that the county shall provide timely notice of all solicitations um to the minority women and emerging small businesses if the contract price exceeds twenty thousand dollars. On page one forty-two, Section fifty dash zero one nine zero, uh food procurements, this is a new exemption that we have added for Marion County clients who require county assistance for purchasing food and household commodities. On page one forty-three, Section fifty dash zero two hundred, we have clarified the contract review process. On page one forty-three, Section fifty dash zero three hundred, under the QRF program, we have added the provision that in determining whether a service is of the appropriate specifications, the county may consider qualifications, education, experience, training, service product, references, and other relevant factors. And that is all of our changes and clarifications regarding our rule, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Hi, Mr. Chair Commissioner, I would just like to add, um, I don't know that that is all there, but those are the most significant changes, but Canberra did a tremendous amount of work going through our rules, wanted to get consistency throughout our process, but then also to get uh clarity for our departments and, and, and how this process works, so that that was a, um, there's a lot, there's a lot in there, and there's a, just a huge amount of work that she did to roll through this. But she, she hit on, on the main points, obviously. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions also that you might have.
Well, thank you, uh Canberra, and uh thank you for the, the earlier meeting that we had where we went through in, in very big detail, as you went through some of the, the bigger details right now, but um I just want to make sure that the legal department's not recruiting you away from the finance department.
She visits us enough that um, it might appear so, but no.
Good job. Commissioner, you have any uh?
Well, it's already, I'm piling on, but this is a hundred and forty-five pages that determines all the procedures for contracting with the county, but also is designed, well, has to uh correspond or with statute, but it's just, it's just so loaded, and I, and I, again, Canberra, just even go through the document and then to be able to know how to tailor it to our needs, and uh it looks like we've done that. I too uh compliment you for good and voluminous work. So maybe.
An emergency.
It is. So Chair Cameron, I would make a motion that we approve this ordinance, first with a uh reading by title only.
And I'll second your motion.
Twice, excuse me.
Uh, I'll second your motion, and uh the chair will read the title twice, right?
Mm-hmm.
For some reason, it's probably buried in this hundred and fifty page. What's that?
I think we need to vote for him.
Oh, uh, motion to have the chair read the title uh twice, uh, was on the table. Any discussion? Seeing none? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so an ordinance amending Marion County Public Contracting Rules and Marion County Code, Chapter three two, three point two-five, and declaring an emergency. And I will read it a second time. An ordinance amending the Marion County Public Contracting Rules and Marion County Code, Chapter three point two-five, and declaring an emergency.
All right, now I'd make a motion that we approve the ordinance that amends Marion County Public Contracting Rules and Marion County Code.
And I'll second your motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. It's adopted, and it's an emergency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice work. Now, training everybody on that issue would be a.
You know, she's so happy to be done with this. I, I almost wish we would have found something that we needed to go back and consider. Dang it.
Okay, we have no public hearing today, so um that concludes our business. Uh, I'll read into the record, our calendar, where we're going to be. Today, obviously, the board session that we just um are about ready to complete. Also today, Wednesday, uh, the sixth, we will be at the Woodburn Marion County Meeting, Luis's Taqueria at five two three Front Street, Woodburn, from twelve to one. Uh, today, uh, there's, is a, from five to seven, the Willamette Heritage Center Board of Directors, meet new executive director, location at the Die House, thirteen thirteen Mill Street, Salem. Also today, um, from five thirty to seven thirty, Willamette National Forest Plan Revision Listening Session, location State and Community Center, four hundred West Virginia Street in Staton. On May seventh, Thursday, seven to eight thirty, State of the County Presentation to the Salem Chamber of Commerce at one 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 zero Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. Also on May seventh, nine thirty to eleven thirty, Department Head Elected Official Meeting in the Commissioner's Board Room uh uh here on the fifth floor. On May eleventh, Monday, from eight AM to three PM, AOC Steering and Legislative Committees and Board Meeting, location at the Local Government Center, twelve oh one Court Street, Northeast Salem. On May twelfth, Tuesday, from seven thirty to eight thirty, the Staton Marion County Meeting, location Covered Bridge, five one zero North Third in Staton, Oregon. That is in Oregon, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I know you live out that way. Just wanted to make sure. Uh, on May twelfth, Tuesday, at nine to eleven, a work session for Public Works Long Range Planning on the fifth floor here in the Silverton Conference Room. On Tuesday, May twelfth, eleven to eleven thirty, an executive session, MCLE and FOPPO bargaining pursuant to ORS one ninety-two dot six six zero two D, location here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Um, May twelfth, Tuesday, still, eleven thirty to one PM, the raising of the bar for annual, Oregon Annual Lunch, location Salem Alliance Church, Cedar Hall, five 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 Gaines, Northeast Salem. And five twelve, Tuesday, two thirty to three thirty, work session, uh, building inspection fees, location here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Um, also on five twelve, Tuesday, from four to six, a joint Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council and Reentry Council Meeting, location in the Commissioner's Board Room here in this building on the fifth floor. Um, on five thirteen, Wednesday, nine to a one, uh, board session right back here in the Senate Hearing Room on the first floor. Long list of good things that we get to do.
The pace seems to quicken. There's a lot more activities, a lot more uh coming up. The one I'm probably the most interested in, in the, in this next week is that uh, it's a Willamette National Forest Plan Revision Listening Session, and there'll be a series of them in this area, and I'm probably gonna attend them all, and I'm not a good listener, Kevin. If they don't do what the, what's supposed to happen in those forests and make jobs, uh, I won't be listening, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I would say you are a good listener, it's just when you're listening to the things that are hard to hear. Um, and uh tomorrow, I'm gonna um add to your, your, I guess, what I want to say, your encouragement in being able to testify on the uh Small Business Administration set aside for the National Forest, which are mills that we do have in the North Saniam River Canyon qualify for those small mills, those family mills that are under a certain amount of um population or, or employees. Uh, there's a um, a movement away from set aside these, these small um woodlands that they get to bid on, and it's moving more into the big multinational corporation bid, so we're gonna try to help what we do have. Um.
Stay in business.
Stay in business, exactly, right. So they can be competitive bidding, so that's tomorrow on the forest issue, and I think you're, tonight, you're gonna be up there listening in Staton and.
It's in Oregon, by the way.
By the way, and I, and I know you don't live there, you live in the, the big metropolis across the highway of sublimity, yeah. What else is going on? Anything else?
No, though I talk about pace, and the pace seems to be the, the undercurrent is, is budget. And as we're going through, we've met with most of the department heads and departments now, and could have opportunity to see what's gonna be, not really what's coming, but what's important to them. And uh, we get to watch John Latimer get more nervous each day as he gets closer to uh putting that together and, and uh presenting it, it's a little bit funny to me because I've seen this twelve times now. Always a big panic, then it comes off amazing, but if you, if you listen to him, it'll never happen. Just, just kinda watch for that.
Yeah, good. Well, the, the only other thing I was thinking of this week, we had an email from a constituent about um some Public Works employees that had done um probably their normal day job, as Alan's sitting out there, probably they do it every day, we just don't get to hear about it, but uh Stephanie and um Mark um over in Public Works helped in an emergency situation, get some things done for some people who are uh in the rural area on a, yeah, on a survey and a septic issue. So Alan, I know we've got a chance to say thank you to them, but um we wanna, uh, again, I know there's people in Marion County that are working for Marion County every day that are doing great things. We just don't always get to hear about it, so continue to pass that on to, to all. So with that, we good?
Well, I don't know, I always, uh, I'm gonna mention it and be careful. I, I guess Commissioners can comment on things, but I'll be real general, we do have ballots out now for an issue that's important to the county with the Extension Service District. Feel pretty good about it, it'll accomplish a lot of good things, but we'll, we'll know here in a couple of weeks on the whole county field.
Great, so I'll just.
You're gonna hang that forever, is that your plan?
Well, it's been in my office, you just, I think I may have put it on your door. Why do you always get top billing? So with that, I think we'll uh adjourn today's meeting.